Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Dawson County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is October 3rd, 2019. We do appreciate your attendance. First off, we're going to start out with a roll call. We're going to start out with a public hearing on our budget. So if everyone would sign in, please. And as you can see, all of us are here today. All right, so get right into the public hearing. First up, we have proposed FY 2020 budget. This is the first of three hearings. The second hearing will be held on, at 6:00 on today. And the third hearing will be held at 6:00 p.m. on October 17th. Have much time, the board could decide to vote if they so desire. I presented the proposed 2020 budget a couple of weeks ago. Staff's done a good job of putting that online for anyone who wants to view that. So at this time, I will open up this public hearing for anyone who wishes to speak on the proposed FY 2020 budget. Anyone, anyone here speak on the FY 2020 budget? Come on in.
Do I need to sign my name?
You do. Even though we know who you are, somebody may not. So tell them who you are.
Danny Thompson, Fire Chief, Dawson County. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Coming for you today to ask the Board to request funding to be added into our 2020 proposed budget. As you may remember, last year, we asked this Board to unfreeze the training captain position. And again, we did this year. Commissioner Gaines had approached us about accepting the $15,000 as a separate salary item. We did so, and we've seen a positive result from that. It's been a good benefit for us. To current date, we still have about $4,300 left of that training money, but it will likely be exhausted. We've been waiting for fall to arrive. However, it's been a little bit out of our control to do our live-fire training. But with that, after the Chairman's presentation of the proposed FY 20 budget, and understanding that the training captain position would remain frozen, we respectfully request that that $15,000 be added back into the budget to support our instructional staff. As you all very well, our personnel have to attain a little over 400 hours of continuing education, fire, and EMS training annually. It should also be noted that this funding helps to support instructional staff to teach various programs, one of them being a driver program. We'll be doing countywide here, and also various CPR programs that we offer to all of the county employees in first aid. So again, I want to take the opportunity to thank the Board for your continued support of the Fire Department. And at that point, I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Anyone have a question of the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on the proposed FY 2020 budget? No, not yet. I think you're talking about this year. Anyone speak on the proposed FY 2020 budget? Seeing now that I've closed that hearing, as stated before, we'll have a second hearing during our 6:00 meeting. And then one more on the 17th. Any discussion on the Board in reference to the proposed 2020 budget? I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look through it, anything that you'd like to change, add, discuss?
Mr. Chairman, there was a request from Lee Darrell about a vehicle. I just, I haven't looked at that part. Could you bring me up to date on that? Was that approved?
No, what we're doing...
Or was that in capital?
It's in capital. Well, capital, we left some money in capital for the Board to decide what they wanted to do with.
I didn't see that specific thing in capital.
No, but I recommended, here's what I recommend. I recommended in capital that we buy a portion of the van for Clark.
Yes.
I recommended in capital $29,000 for the floor at the fleet shop so that we would have safety there. And then the remaining $205,000 in capital that I did not make the decision on, that I basically said would be up to the Board to decide how they wanted to spend that.
What was that amount?
Two hundred and two. Two hundred, yeah, right, two hundred and two. Anyway, normally what we do in reference to vehicles is Shannon makes the recommendation for vehicles, and as you saw in the budget, he made a recommendation of priority one and priority two. I do not know whether that vehicle fell in the priority one, but I would recommend to this Board that we don't vary from our fleet director's recommendations if he doesn't classify that vehicle as not to be a priority one purchase.
I don't believe I saw that on the list at all.
I wonder if he's aware of that vehicle?
He's aware of all the vehicles that the county has care of.
He provided some.
Yes, he gave us a list.
He provided a list of priority one vehicles and priority two. And it may not even have been in that list.
I don't think it was.
It was. Okay, so with his expertise, he is saying it's not even in those two lists.
I just remember Lee Darrell plating and acting like that vehicle was just not good at all, so that's where I'm...
We bought that little vehicle the year before last, I believe it was.
It might be a good idea, Julie, for us to revisit that list and see where those vehicle priorities are at. If you can get that to us, Dave, you know, shoot it back out. It should be up.
I've got it, everybody's got it.
Yeah.
And as the Board will remember, the Board voted basically to take his recommendation that he was going to pick one. So there's, like I say, $202,000 that you will have the opportunity in capital to decide what you think is the most highest priority. And I think also, there was a capital list that you were provided with that you can pick from as well. Any other discussion amongst the Board before we move on to new business? All right, moving to new business. First up, we have a presentation of requests to use county facility parking lots during the Mountain Moonshine Festival. Care for Kids Board member Tom French. Tom?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our request is pretty simple, straightforward. We are just requesting to be able to use the parking lots at the Justice Center. Make sure they gear along, because last year I actually missed one. We ask to use the Justice Center, the Sheriff's Parking Lot, the front and the back of the K-Long Building. This year, we added voters' registration because we don't have early voting this year, and the library. And then also, we would like your approval to use the parking lot at the Health Department. That's where we put our children's play lot. It's nice, and we can block it off, and we can keep all the kids safe there. And then the only other things, it'll all be blocked off exactly the same as it was last year. Road closures are identical as last year, except Allen Street is closed earlier from that. And Damon Gibbs and the School Board have been phenomenal to work with so that we can get everything structured and done prior to that. You guys have any questions?
Questions for Tom?
I think since last year, the city park, and that's consumed quite a bit of your parking there. Now, are you able to work something out with the city as far as that area that you utilize quite heavily?
Chris, we would love to be able to work something out with the city if they can figure out what they want to do. It's between the contractors. We had a discussion with the mayor last night and the city manager earlier in the week. And what happens is, we got the park out delayed last year because of rain, and this year, it's being delayed because of no rain. We just, if we could have flipped it around, it would have gone much better. Yes, we lost a lot of parking with all of that. We still do not know if we're going to have access to any of that this year, although we've been told that we will have it next year. But that will, we will not be using that in the future for parking. We will be using the Board of Ed and the community center. That's where we're going to put our RV parking and back along that area back in there.
What, I mean, because that was several hundred spots, I would assume. So what's the game plan of disseminating that several hundred spots throughout? Have you picked up anything else? I know the high school, you started using more prevalently with the shuttle bus and things like that, so you need to shift that over there.
Yeah, the, last year, we had picked up that open field next across the street from Crossbridge Church, crossing where Fred's bus was for sale. So the front of that, we can use, and then the driveway goes up, and up the back of that, there's about an acre and a half of land that's way back, back in there.
Right, right, right.
So we've picked that up. Last year, we couldn't use it because of the rain, and we didn't need it because of the rain.
Right.
But seriously, that has been the only thing that we've picked up for parking. We are strapped. Last year, we filled the high school. We had, we put people into Robinsons that we'd never put people into, and voters' registration wasn't in there, it was there. This side of town, we're really tight on parking. We don't know what we're going to do in the future.
K-Long Building Parking, I know we've been working on it. Key, wherever it is.
It's complete.
Is it done?
It's complete.
Okay, so it's good to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then parking in front of the sheriff's office, I assume, do we ask them independently if they're cool with that?
Yes.
They're good? Okay.
Tom, are y'all doing anything to handicap parking, and are they shoveling the handicap?
Yes.
Where's it at?
We used to do all the handicap parking at the community center and by the Board of Ed because it was the only solid surface. Now that we've pushed out, we have handicap parking at the junior high, we have linear tech, we have the high school, we have a Robinson, and now with the buses, we move people back and forth. And then we also have a shuttle where people are at City Hall, and they want to go uptown. Last year, we had three six-passenger golf carts that we moved back and forth, up and down that hill, and that was our proposal to do again this year.
Other questions for Tom? No issues last year, then what did, from a parking perspective?
Yes, other than the grain on the one day. We still, we still struggle on Fridays with, and I think we're always going to on a Friday, is food lines, trying to get all of their orders in, the festivals trying to set up, and there's always this little collision of everybody trying to do everything in that little tiny, teeny tiny space. And I don't know any other way to do it other than just, everybody just calm down and take a deep breath and deal with it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation of intergovernmental agreement between Dawson County and Development Authority of Dawson County. Development Authority Chairman Brian Trapp.
Good afternoon, thank you for the time. I know I was here just a couple of weeks ago, so I mean, it seemed like a lot has changed, but we've actually got a couple of pieces of pretty exciting news to share before we even dive into the purpose of being here. One, if you monitor the DawsonCountyNews.com, which is my homepage, you'll see that we, the Dawson County Chamber, issued a press release which we're happy to provide by hard copy with the University of Georgia College of Engineering students coming in and helping us with the process of developing and assessing industrial sites. We're leveraging their students to develop a professional assessment as we begin several projects, with that being one of them. And they're working at seven potential sites in the community, and they'll come back, I don't know the timeframe for the production itself.
An initial draft in December, sort of the evaluation of these seven sites, pros and cons, and then their recommendations of the top three to four, which they will put a full engineering assessment on in April.
And so as we seek to develop an understanding of what opportunities are available to us for additional site development, that obviously will be a wonderful piece of information to have. No decisions, of course, recommendations will be, will be made, but no decisions necessarily to come out of that, and we'll be happy to share that end product with you as well as we go forward. So thank you, Betsy, for coordinating that, and being involved in that. But perhaps even more exciting, literally the day after I presented here last, two weeks ago, we received the official word that the Appalachian Regional Commission grant was awarded to the Development Authority of Dawson County for a total of $100,000. It's a $50,000 cash, or a $50,000 prize, if you will, for the Development Authority. We are super excited to have it, super excited that Betsy and Chris have found the source, managed the process, and got us across the finish line. It creates a lot of opportunities for us. We'll obviously keep you up to speed as we go through the process. We'll be sharing a document that Betsy has put together. I'll read from it briefly. It will produce a strategic plan for the Development Authority regarding economic development, focusing on target industry analysis, park location recommendations, including infrastructure and retail adaptive reuse. And that leads directly onto the work that the University of Georgia is doing at IJAS RAP, if we push right into that conversation. Site marketing plans, recruitment incentive development, workforce housing analysis, public-private partnerships, and finding the opportunities to put those in place for the long term, and then making sure that we engage the community throughout our entire process of developing. So again, kudos to the team for getting that done, and we're very excited about the two things here that I shared. If you want to take them home in the privilege and walk through that.
Did you say $100,000 or $50,000?
Oh, it's a $100,000 total prize.
Fifty-fifty, man.
Yeah, fifty-fifty, man.
Okay.
And I made, in my presentation to you two weeks ago as well, we highlighted the key components of the intergovernmental services agreement with the Development Authority in Dawson County. At a high level, without taking experience of the PowerPoint slide, to actually read line by line with the services agreement itself. To recap, what the services agreement that we are proposing to the county to consider would be, would be essentially a performance-based model that ties Development Authority performance to a list of objectives that the county is able to hold the Development Authority to from an accountability perspective. It blocks in funding for a multi-year relationship tied to a fraction of the mill. The thought process behind that proposal being that it removes the year-over-year conversation around economic development and allows us to focus on the strategic elements related to the things contained in the Appalachian Regional Commission grant, and a lot of other things as well. It's ultimately a risk-based funding strategy for the Development Authority. We can be successful if we're successful, and we can be okay if we're not successful. We have supported and tried to facilitate a legal review with the county, which the county attorney's been actively involved in reviewing and redlining the agreement. One red line has been shared with our attorney, and there was one minor adjustment. They came back to clarify timing of payments, and I believe that you haven't speak out of turn, that we ran that by you mechanically.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, that was functional. So we've worked with as many partners as we can think of in the conversation to make sure that we're assessing your interest in this, obviously the appropriateness of it. It's something that excites us because it allows us to focus on multi-year approach to economic development. It embeds accountability in our relationship. You'll notice, of course, as you read through it, that it's several hopeful calls. Hopefully, we never get to that, but at the same time, it provides for that mechanism. The reason I wanted to come here, just separate and apart from my last update, is I wanted to provide an opportunity for us to talk through it. I know we've spoken one-on-one with several of you. We're available to talk one-on-one again as well, if that's appropriate. In the Development Authority's perfect world, we'd be able to move to the pace that allows this to be in place for January 1, 2020, with whatever voting schedule is appropriate for the commission. And I'm happy to take this in whatever direction we'd like. I just want to provide a forum for conversation if there was any, any desire for it, or if we wanted to speak to a specific reference within the context of the services agreement itself.
Talk a little bit about the percentage.
So we are requesting a .5 fraction of the mill. The request that we had submitted to the county, separate and apart from this, was for $200,000 coming into the new year. We estimate that .15 would be about...
I thought he said .5, and it was .15.
.15.
Okay, I didn't, my ears didn't hear the one.
I hope I said that originally, too. I hope I didn't misread. If I did, I apologize. .15. She'll have me if you need to. I apologize for that, but .15. And that would be, you know, obviously, the approximation would be about $215,000 compared to $200,000. And that was fluctuated, of course, with the tax.
Is an agreement like this common with other counties?
Yes, ma'am.
We've never had this before, haven't we? So is this something that other counties do?
We, earlier this year, one of the things that, just a project that we undertook, was bringing in outside counsel to tell us what do, what do other communities do, and how do they typically structure themselves. And after doing a very in-depth assessment with a great analysis, our counsel's recommendation was that we should be like other communities, which is services agreement in place like this. We don't have, even somebody have the number or the ones that do, but he did confirm that it's a very common relationship to have a services agreement for economic development.
And 10 years, is that the common?
That's, that's what he recommended, and that's what we went with his recommendation.
Well, just, and these other people tie this to the mini-trade or to the...
Yes, ma'am.
I think the point of that is, when you recently mentioned that it's a performance-based attachment that says the better performance your organization produces for the overall county and economic development, then it benefits everybody in the same way. You're able to have more, we're able to have more resources to take care of things, you're able to have more resources to continue the efforts that you've been doing.
Well, sir.
It's my understanding that this proposal, if we were to move forward, then it replaces any line of budgets we have in our existing proposals, potentially a difference in net of $20,000.
And the logic behind the 10-year proposal, the 10-year request, would be, at least from the Development Authority's thought process, would be ideally, we get to a fully self-funded environment for the Development Authority. This is a baby step in that direction. It helps us walk before we can run. We don't know how quickly we can get there. Obviously, the Regional Commission grant that targets, you know, strategic site development is a key component of that to get us to the point that we start spending off sites, should we ever be able to get to that point. But this provides us with a steady, steady stream while we get there.
You know, on the outside looking in, seeing the very methodical steps that have been taken in the last couple of years with this group, and they've communicated, you know, I think first, a couple of years ago, you said we want to, our number one goal for that year was to try to find what's a good way to move forward with funding. Check, Mark, this is, you went out, you get a third party that said, looked at all the different options, this is what they've come back with, you know, another component of, let's go after some grant money to try to really drill down and find out what some of the best resorts we have and what we need to be focused on. That is, it's not fully checked, but we did get the award. So to me, it's walking through the processes, it's been laid out, and I think it's been a very strategic process. I do like that. And the communication with us has been phenomenal, after, compared to word of word.
If I could just interject one thing, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to the extent there's any concern about the 10-year provision, it is set up to run from January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2029, but in Section 7.01, there is a provision that would allow either party to terminate for convenience with 90 days notice at the end of the funding year. So while it's intended to be a long-term engagement, there is that opportunity, and there's reporting requirements, and as you said, performance requirements, that that can be assessed all along, to the extent there's any concern about that time period.
Oh, books and records, Section 3.02.
Excuse me.
You would deliver regular updates and reports as required by the county from time to time. What is considered regular? What would we, how often?
From a partnership perspective, I throw that out to the group. What is the right cadence to get you comfortable with how we're managing the business essentially? And, you know, we come to you as frequently as we need to keep everyone here up to speed, if the polling frequency is sufficient.
No less than that, for me. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but...
Producing financials is, we produce them for our Board at that frequency anyway, and we'd be comfortable sharing that information with this Board as well as we go forward.
But the way this is written, it's not going to say quarterly, it just says as required, so...
We could probably change that.
Yeah, we can say how often about in a work session, for that reason, so we can do that.
We can say not less than quarterly?
Yeah.
Would that be sufficient?
And I want to know that Commissioner Fosson, Section 7.02 as well, that addresses reporting requirements, and it says such other information is very recently requested by the county. So I mean, I think it sets it up so that we would, could request information at any time if there's a particular project that's going on that we want to see financials and so forth. But I think adding the quarterly reference in 3.02 would be appropriate.
Regular just doesn't, I mean, regular, that's so general.
Absolutely. Also, in that 7.02A, there is an obligation that they would submit their audited financial statements once they're completed each year, so we would know that we would have those completed. But I will, I'll add a note to that Section 3.02 if that's...
Yeah, that's really acceptable. Thank you.
And also, I can't even pronounce this word, so I need explanation of what it is. This is also on page four, Section 4.03, county's obligations unconditional, and that last line, shall not be subject to some big word by set-off. What in the world does this mean?
Set-off.
Do you see that?
Yes, ma'am, the right of set-off.
Pronounce that for me.
Where are you reading from, Commissioner?
Page four, down at the very last line under...
It's 109. It's 109, okay.
It's what, what?
Page 109, that's what you...
Oh, 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 I'm, I'm hard copy.
Oh.
All right, I'm sorry. Okay, I drift off.
Oh, diminution by set-off.
What in the world does that mean?
So should not, diminution just means diminished, it cannot be reduced by set-off, count and claim payment or otherwise.
And what is set-off?
Um, you know, to the extent that there would be any contention that we would not pay the full funds because we owe them something, so they're going to set it off one claim or debt against the other. So it just really makes clear that it's an unconditional, as the title says, unconditional obligation for payment, which, which because of the ability to terminate and enforce performance standards, I mean, that's for you to determine as a matter of business whether you think that's reasonable, but I think there's provisions in here that provide some protections on that point. But otherwise, from their perspective, it is an unconditional obligation, which then allows them to utilize that for their purposes because they have that and can carry it forward as, you know, perhaps even collateral to the extent they need to, and different things and projects they may pursue.
And what percent, did, what do you agree on the percent? You asked him a question about percentage.
.15 is what's in the document.
Okay, okay, okay.
Chris said it comes to about 20 additional thousand.
Based on what's proposed with the current budget.
Correct. Yeah, proposed $200,000 in return, but, yeah, for 2020. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have a presentation of requests for Board of Elections and Registration 2019 Budget Adjustment. Michelle, you're going to handle that for Ms. Glenn, who is with her husband at the hospital.
That's great. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is to ask for additional funding for our 2019 budget. Total adjustment, total requested additional funds is $12,126.95. The majority of that, as you see, is broken down for travel, fees and fees, and election edu... Uh, the majority of that, as you see, is broken down for travel, fees and fees and election, uh, education and training. That is due to the, uh, the conference being held in December this year, is combined conference for, uh, we used to be two separate associations, Voter Registration Association of Georgia and the Georgia Election Official Conference was two combined into one. This conference was not originally scheduled for two thousand nineteen, this is actually to give us credit for our continuing education for two thousand twenty. So in two thousand twenty, we will not have a, a conference, this will be credit for the two thousand twenty year due to the heavy election schedule and the new voting equipment that the state of Georgia is, is obtaining. We'll have to have quite a bit of extensive training, uh, on that in addition to the election cycle, so, uh, that's why, uh, the request for the additional funds for this year's budget, even though it is for the two thousand twenty conference.
It's going to be held this year?
It is going to be held this year, um, in December.
And they're going to, uh, nicely if I understood it correctly, off-years of elections is when they're going to try to have their conferences instead of trying to have them during the election year?
That's correct, yes, sir. Uh, this is just the first combined conference that we're having, um, and it is critical for all the board members and each staff member to attend, as we will be going over all of the House bill, three sixteen legislation changes, and the new equipment training, uh, just a lot of changes this year that it's, it's imperative that everyone attend this conference.
Questions for Rochelle?
The total amount to twelve thousand, one twenty-six, is that what?
Yes, ma'am, that's the base amount that's being requested. A portion of that, two thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars, ninety-five cents is for legal. Um, that line item was deleted previously from the budget when we had the county attorney funds. Uh, we did have a residency issue, uh, that required legal counsel, that we had to get, uh, legal counsel for to get it cleared up, so, that's what that funding is for.
What's the membership dues? Who is this to?
It is to the association, the new association is the, uh, Elections of Voter Registration, um, I don't know what the conference is called, Georgia Association of Voter Registration and Election Officials is now the combined conference, and that is who the dues and fees are for. They are required.
So, yeah.
The sale and, is that for, is that for the board members?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's for four, four board members and three staff members.
Other questions? We're, I don't know if it's proper to ask us, ma'am, but, but where we add all those voting systems or machines and, I mean, that's probably, you know, box asset.
We do have, of course, a city and a special election this November, we will be using our old equipment-
Old equipment.
Uh, for that election. We just, uh, this week, Monday and Tuesday, we were in Calhoun for our first training on the new equipment. Uh, it was more an introduction to the actual system itself, it wasn't per se training us in detail on any means, but it was an introduction to the components of the system, uh, the basics of how each unit, you know, will work. The procedures are still being written by the state election board that we will have to follow in regards to the new equipment. Um, so that was just the groundwork. We have received, and every county in Georgia, hundred fifty-nine counties, has at this point received at least one of the new units and one of the new printers. We have not received our servers yet, so once we do receive that and hopefully receive enough training in December at the conference, we'll be holding some public, um, you know, public showings at our office for anyone to be able to come in and ask questions, see it demonstrated, once we receive some additional training.
Are we going to see a large ramp up, um, I guess you, you assumed it in your upcoming budget proposal, but, uh, there's no other increased cost for trainings involving that that we haven't already, um, anticipated for two thousand twenty, no?
Not at this time. Uh, we, such as this, this, uh, training that was just, we just attended in Calhoun-
Yeah.
We received notification of that two weeks ago. So I'm sure we will have additional training, but until we're told, and I think that's why Chairman Thurman had asked that we just come forward for a request for additional funding as needed for the training because it's, it's not even set in stone, it's just kind of as we go.
Yeah, I'm glad to talk about this last year.
Yeah.
Obviously, because she didn't know if they were going to join conference or not.
Right.
Because she didn't know about it last year.
Also, it's my understanding that you would like for the board to move this to the six o'clock loading session tonight because of the registration timeframe?
That's correct.
Board has any, does the board have any problems with that? Okay?
Well, we want them trained.
Want them trained.
Because we know people fussing and saying what terrible elections we have.
It is a very good system, we're excited, we are excited about the system, it is a lot more software-based than we are, than we're used to, because the system is, you know, fourteen years old that we're using now. Um, so basically, you'll be learning the new software for the program, a lot of detail in that, the process will basically be the same on our side. Um, but as I said, the state election board is still writing the rules for us to follow the procedures with the new equipment, so that's, you know, that's kind of where we're at, we're just taking them in steps.
And how many, we bought, um, gosh, how many units did you buy a couple of years ago that are now trash? Um, are we getting the one?
Thirty-nine thousand.
Seventy thousand.
And at that time, as we, as we presented at that time, there was no indication.
I know.
Yeah, y'all, we talked about it, yes.
Having new equipment coming.
Is it one-on-one ratio, we're getting the same number of units on this new system that we currently have?
That's correct.
Okay.
We don't know the exact number that we're, uh, that we're receiving, we were told that yesterday, it's based on the trend of voter registration numbers-
Right.
That, that we, you know, that we currently have, they do not go down at all the number, if anything, we'll be getting more based on our voter registration numbers.
And we don't have to pay those the first time that they break.
That's, that's correct, and they're trying to really look at ways to offset the cost of the counties, um, as far as, they're trying to give us every piece of equipment and everything that we will need that the counties won't have to purchase, and a lot of that, honestly, um, the Secretary of State will have a weekly conference calls, uh, with Chris Harvey, with the Secretary of State, and he's giving us weekly updates. And, and new things are told to us every week in regard to the new equipment.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, the presentation of Special Event Business License Ordinance Revision, planning and development director, Jameson King, Jameson.
Chairman, at the Board's request, we have, uh, written this update to our business license ordinance to accommodate, uh, the county manager or his deputy to, uh, sign off on special vis, special event business license that reoccur year after year. Uh, as you probably recall, a few of these, uh, events are, you know, the Uncle Shucks, Papa Pat's, Fossil Farms, things like that, that, uh, they come standing for you every year to, uh, get their special event business license. Um, these events will still have to apply every year, we still will require, uh, to be passed around between the departments, the sheriff's office and the fire department, we'll still comment on it and we'll get to review it to make sure there's no issues with it, but, uh, it also says that when we pass over to attorneys, they added the language that no material changed the application or expansion of the impact event, so the, the events can't get any larger, if they do, they have to come back to the board. And this will need to go to a public hearing.
Questions for Jameson?
Do you, you still, do you have to do a background check every year?
Yes, ma'am.
I hate that.
Never know what you might do out there with those flowers.
I know it, I'm telling you, and, and of course, you still pay the hundred dollars or whatever it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Still pay the amount, but the difference is, he would approve or disapprove.
Yes, ma'am.
That's right. So that's the only thing that's changed with this.
The only thing that's changed with it. The application stays exactly.
Have to come here.
Yeah.
But it may be in the manager report.
Yeah.
Maybe we would report that. How are we measuring material growth? Is it by geographic size or is it by?
That's sort of left up to the determination of the application, because what we'll do is we'll keep it after all the application, like we always do on the one, compared to the new ones, and we will present the changes-
Okay.
And make this determinations on that and our, uh, the recommendations of our staff.
Other questions for Jameson? Miss Davis, you got anything to add to that?
Um, I do not, I, the thing that I, I thought was important, and he referenced it, was that we did add that provision just to ensure that someone doesn't come in and get a permit for a simple little event, and then it becomes a massively different or changed event that creates infrastructure issues and traffic and, and concerns that you might have. So that's something that, um, you know, would have to be evaluated by staff, and it likely would be complaint-driven, just like anything else, how would we know it changes or gets bigger, but, um, I think that's an important inclusion that we'll have an opportunity then to make sure that they don't get permitted and then forever after have carte blanche to do something that is, so, measure possibly.
I know, it can happen, I'm just sitting here thinking, well, why, why don't we do this? Well, that's a good idea, let's do this, and before you know it, it has got bigger than, so, I think that's a good thing.
Some modifications I think would be fine and expected, and there'd be expected to be some growth perhaps every, every year-
Yeah.
But just if it's a substantial difference, it's going to come back.
Lot, drawing a lot more people, lot more traffic.
Or doing an entirely different function, you know, um, you know, if you, if you, if you're pumping patch and all of a sudden you're running a carnival, then, you know, that would be something a little different than you would expect, that kind of thing.
Confess it on the application.
There you go.
And as you know, our application is very expensive.
Yes, it is, I thought I was finished, but I wasn't.
That was volume.
It was quite an experience.
Other questions for Jameson? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have presentation of I F D number three, four, nine, dash, nineteen, sale of surplus real property owned by Dawson County Attorney Commissioner, Re-Vis Purchasing Manager, Melissa Paul.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to let you know that this is for the Re-Vis for the six properties that we have for surplus that you all wanted to sell. Um, this was released on August twelfth as of the OCGA standard thirty-six, dash, five, dash, three. It opened publicly on September seventeenth, we received two bids for property B. Property B is a one point three acres plus or minus acre tract on Stacy Lane, south of, um, sixty-six, at highway four hundred. The two prop, uh, sorry, the two bids we received, one was from a Rory Cunningham for a hundred thousand dollars. The second was from brothers Robert Pilati and George Pilati Junior, that amount was two hundred and twenty-seven, five hundred, and an ironic thing with our highest bid received, this is the actual, um, brothers that actually donated this to the property, to the county in nineteen ninety-five as a gift, so now they're going to buy it back, as we talked, you said. Part of the requirement for that is that they have to give us a five percent, um, non-refundable cash deposit, that would be amount of eleven thousand, three hundred and seventy-five within two days of notice of award.
Questions for Melissa? We're around with other ones, are those still, I mean, we got to go back to another process?
That'll be a decision that you all make, we did not receive anything on the other properties, the other six, five properties.
Other questions?
The notice to the paper is sixty dollars and then you have my time.
Which is worse than nothing. We don't count that.
Nothing at all, that's my job to release this, though.
Even the last time we spoke about this, um, because around one we got no bids, and this is an improvement, we did a few things I think that Laura helped us with that perhaps facilitated in two bids, so that's great. We did discuss the concept of retaining a broker, so we could discuss further in executive session how we might want to consider a disposal of this property, um, but that would be a, a next step, or we can keep paying our sixty dollars and, and advertise.
Right, and then during the broker, you have a lot of other regulations and a lot that you have to follow. More so than just doing it this way.
Other questions for Melissa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of revised Dawson County Employee Handbook, Human Resources Director, Lisa Green, Lisa.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, today in front of you is just an overview of our revised, um, employee handbook, the draft version is with Gerard Davis, and I'll go over that as well. Um, basically what I want to discuss today is an overview as to why did we revise this handbook? Um, yeah, I also want to talk about what our current handbook is kind of composed of, as well as group involvement and networking, and an opportunity to thank a bunch of people here today. Um, some of the proposed changes, some of the soft benefits and how we can retain our employees and get our, um, other citizens to work for Dawson County. You know, there's a lot of soft benefits out there that we didn't see and we didn't have in our current handbook, but from the group of people and doing a lot of networking, we have that opportunity to incorporate those soft benefits into this handbook, and it gives reasons for people to come to Dawson County and stay at up with Dawson County. I'll also talk about where we are now, um, and what's next, and then any questions that you might have. So why did we need to revise the handbook? Well, it's plain and simple, it's outdated. Um, May seventh of twenty fifteen was the last version of the handbook, um, that's over four years ago, there's a lot of policies that have changed, there's a lot of deviations that we have all kind of, oh, this is how we do it now. Um, and so in, in a nutshell, the whole thing really needed to be revised. If you ever had a chance to really look at that current handbook, the way it's broken down, it didn't flow, it was, um, it's just kind of really all over the place. It's also an opportunity to identify new policies and new benefits and new things that we can offer our employees, um, as well as update those old policies that are out there. Um, one of the questions was, when I first got here, was about retention, and I believe, um, Mr. Chairman, you was like, we've got to find a way to keep our employees here. And your words, Chairman Thurman, was, we need to be competitive, but we need to be better. And so that's what this handbook is bring, is going to be when this gets approved. Um, I've said this before, that Dawson County is great, but we can make it greater, and I firmly believe that. Um, and I know that, you know, there's a lot of different ways that we can keep our employees, and of course, everyone will first say, well, the money is the number one reason, but I, I want to ask you that question is, do you know what the number one reason as to why people leave their current employment? Recognition. Recognition, lack of appreciation is the number one reason, seventy-nine percent of people will leave their job. Um, I guarantee that salary does play a big part of this, and we hope to see results with the salary study, but that's not the only reason, and I think it's important to focus on everything and not just the salary. Unless you're Tolbert, of course. Hey, you got a good one in there.
Appreciate that, thank you.
All right, our current handbook, bear with me, is consisted of four sections, four different rules, eight regulations, seven exhibits, and if you have ever tried to read it, it is all over the place. Um, there is no requirement to separate a handbook this way. Um, I, after looking and networking in the different other counties, there's chapters, it's just like a book. We need to make this handbook very easily understood for new employees, current employees, and it should be very easy to find a paragraph instead of trying to reference two different paragraphs. For example, promotion is not only referenced in regulation one point, one point five, but it's also referenced in regulation five point two. Promotion should be in one location, lead should be in one location, it shouldn't be all over the place. Uh, there's a lot of repeated information in our current handbook, you can find something in here and then you can look three different areas and something is still pertaining to it. It's difficult to reference, especially when it comes time for Gerard and Davis or any attorney to review. If you're referring back to paragraph three point two, well, in section one, it's about attitude and behavior, but three point two, another section, is on personal lead. So what are we referencing when we're actually- So what are we referencing when we're actually, you know, documenting disciplinary pay or we've got to be able, if there's three point two, there should be one three point two. There's also no incentive to stay past ten years of employment. Um, and, and I'll go into some of the ways that we can make this better. The new handbook is revised into seventeen chapters. It's easy to revise in the future if we need to change a paragraph. If we need to add a chapter, we can add a chapter. It's going to flow. It's easy to reference because there is only one paragraph to reference. When you're looking for promotions, it's going to be in one chapter. There's plenty of reasons to work and stay employed with Dawson County and this employee handbook is going to be one of those reasons. Group involvement. I got here on April eighth of twenty nineteen and on Tuesday, April sixteenth, I held my first meeting regarding the employee handbook. The entire training room was filled. You can see a list of, of personnel that were here, but I also want anyone that has participated to please stand up and just be recognized. This is not just an HR handbook. This is your employee handbook and everybody had a role in it and I appreciate everybody's Uh, we also did a lot of networking. Um, like I said, we've reached out to Hall, Forsyth, Lumpkin, Catusa, South Fulton, Marietta, all over the place just to see what is their policy. We reached out to GLGPA and got a lot of different responses back when we were trying to make changes.
What is that? I don't know.
It's the Georgia local.
Government.
Yes, government. It's just a, it's an outreach program that allows us to be able to ask questions and get a lot of different government responses and it helps HR basically if anyone has a question and anyone else can answer it on how they're doing it as well, as well. And I wanted to thank everybody because although it's, I spent a lot of time, probably anywhere from twenty-five to thirty hours a week and that included weekends, to really format the, the old handbook into this new handbook. Um, I wanted to get this done a lot sooner, but there was a lot that needed to be changed. So to say that this was revised is an understatement, it's like rewritten when you see it. As far as our proposed changes, these are the three areas that I really want you guys to focus on when you do get a chance to get the, the draft version in front of you because you'll notice that a lot of it did change as far as the format. But there's only a few sections that really have changed and offered benefits, you know, and soft benefits to our employees. Um, I told you this earlier that the number one reason why people leave is recognition. And currently for our performance evaluations or appraisals, they do nothing. We tell the department head when they're due.
They're useless.
They're useless unless you're going to terminate someone. And so why are we doing them? Do we get rid of them? No. But we need to make an incentive to do our, um, to have the evaluations completed. So we reached out and I, to different counties and some of them and only some of them just offered a merit adjustment. Um, and a merit is great if we have the money and we're not always going to have the money. And I can recognize that and I didn't want to just incorporate into this handbook, well, if we have the money, then there shows a purpose because I think we should be able to offer something else if that's not the case. Um, and that's where Dawson County would offer awarded PTO, which is paid time off and I'm going to get into that, which is the new leave program. Um, we would also change the, the, um, the appraisals to be done on a calendar year. You would have to be present and employed with Dawson County from one January through thirty-one December to even receive any of the benefits that would come from the merit adjustment. Um, an evaluation would still be required to be completed, but if a salary or PTO was awarded, it would only be to those that were here for the full calendar year. So basically if you were to receive a four point two on your current evaluation and there were no funds available for that year, then they would receive eight hours of time off. So there's now an incentive to complete the appraisals on a calendar year. Another new one is paid family leave, PFL. Um, and this really applies to male or female. Uh, back in the day, it may have been called maternity leave. Um, we looking at the future now and the way everything in life is going and we need to focus on it applies to every person. It applies to every situation. Um, currently our handbook, we offer you twelve weeks of FMLA. FMLA is unpaid leave. It just guarantees your job when you return after twelve weeks. So it is basically on your own to support your own income during the most difficult time of the year. So what we're proposing is four weeks at sixty percent of regular pay. It's not a request for more funds. We've already budgeted for that individual to have a hundred percent of that pay during that time. We are asked, we were requested to do four weeks of sixty percent of their pay. Now, if they wanted to top that off with time off, they certainly could if they wanted to have that full paycheck. This only applies for one family event for a twelve month period and that's for anyone through birth, adoption, or foster care placement. So this would apply for anyone at any age in the event that they have a child or teenager or whatever the case may be. It's going to run concurrent with FMLA and as an employee, you must be employed with the county for at least one year before you can receive this benefit. I just want to share with you a couple other of the areas in Georgia. Marietta offers four weeks at a hundred percent. City of Milton offers six weeks at a hundred percent. Clarkston, Georgia is eight weeks at sixty-seven percent. Warner Robbins is four weeks at a hundred percent. South Fulton is six weeks at a hundred percent. We're not asking for a hundred percent. We're simply asking for something instead of nothing. This one is the biggest change that I wanted to spend a little bit of time on. This is paid time off. Uh, PTO is what we're calling it and currently what we offer is personal and sick. Um, you accrued a certain amount for personal each pay period and a certain amount for sick each pay period. Uh, the accrual rate stops at, after ten years for personal and it stops at five years for sick. So there, it doesn't matter if you were here for twenty-two years or if you were here for ten years, you're accruing the same rate of leave. Our rollover amount for personal has been eighty, eighty-four, ninety-six for your, the standard employee, but you were able to bank up to a thousand hours of sick leave. It takes a while to accrue a thousand hours of sick leave when you're only accruing it at one point five four or one point nine two. The proposed PTO is combining your personal and sick. Forsyth does this, but we wanted to be better. The rollover for us, we were requesting is four eighty. And I will tell you that for Forsyth, they are allowed to, I think it's like you can accrue as much as you want over there, but we had to put a cap at something because we don't want, we don't want the bank to really put us in a, um, what's the word I'm looking for, Vicky? Liability, immobility. Um, so when we're talking about the four eighty, yes, it's a huge jump from eighty hours. I get that. But if you divide that out and you needed FMLA for twelve weeks, that is your full paycheck for twelve weeks. We are not asking for anything more. It was just simply to match something on FMLA in the event that you were needing to be out. Your accrual rate will continue all the way to twenty-five years. We kept the same numbers together. We just simply added personal and sick and then we kind of incremented them all throughout the, the span. Um, in the, in the current one, it's basically if you've earned it, you can't use it until your probation period is over where if you've earned it, you should be able to use it. You're not going to earn that much anyway in your probation period. So if you needed to take a day off, you should be able to use your personal leave, PTO, to take the time off if you needed that day. That's coming from personal experience when I took a day off and I did not get paid, but I had the time to use it. Um, another great benefit that we are, we would like to offer is a one-time payout of up to forty PTO hours each calendar year. So what that offers is, let's say an individual has three hundred and fifty hours, but they know it's going to be tight around Christmas time. If they want to cash in forty hours so that they can get an extra paycheck, that's what we're requesting. It would be a one-time calendar year event. So if they cashed in twenty hours in July, that was their one-time event. They don't get twenty hours later on. It's a one-time event of up to forty hours each calendar year. That will help them out for vacation purposes as well as Christmas. If you look at the next page, at the top chart is our personal current accrual rate. As you can see, after ten years, there is no incentive to stick around. What's not shown here is the sick balance or the sick accrual rate. Zero to five years is one point five four hours each pay period and after five years, it's one point nine two hours per pay period. That's it. And I'm sorry, but the older that we get, the sicker we get.
Don't look at me. Look straight at me.
You look straight at me and I felt like that night.
I feel fine today.
Today.
I'll start looking at Commissioner Gaines. And so the below chart is the accrual rate that shows our eighty, eighty-four, and ninety-six hour employee. And we even broke it down a little bit further for those under five years because people are leaving at that two-year mark. And so that little, um, hump right there to get you through to the five years, we actually added that accrual rate in there. Um, and then it's every five years after that. And I understand it may look like a lot of hours, but they'll have that opportunity to cash in the forty and, you know, in the event that they would ever, you know, need their FMLA, they would be able to have enough hours in their bank to be able to cover paycheck. So where are we now and what's next? Well, the employee handbook is with review with Gerard Davis. Uh, we met with them last week for some minor, um, changes in it, but not significant ones. Um, I'm presenting this today as, you know, in a hope that it may be ready so that we can have it voted on the October seventeenth session. However, if it's not ready, we are hoping that maybe it will get voted in on November seventh. I am willing to come back to the county to do, ask any questions and make sure that this product does get, um, approved before, uh, the end of the year. And whenever it does get approved, I would like to make it effective January first, twenty twenty, so that way it gives us time in the, in the HR system to be able to take care of the changes that need to happen on, on the backside of it. And so I am available for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Lisa? I, I guess it's hard to compute what the long-term fiscal liability is with it. I mean, has there been any analysis done on that?
No, but right now you're able to collect that sick hours of up to a thousand and you have some people that have over eight hundred and nine hundred hours where when they are terminated, they will get paid out.
Is there hours? Is there hours?
Yeah, so it's almost built in to begin with.
It is.
And so what I also want to stress is that, you know, when we, when we do change over to this, no one is going to leave, lose any of their personal or sick leave. And I'm not asking for a payout of people who are already in, have an excess amount of their sick leave. What we would do is take whatever is in their sick leave right now, we would move that to a PTO bank and people can use it if they need to, but no more accrual into it. And then the personal would be set up for PTO. And so that, that way it can be monitored and kept at four eighty.
Back-end software, is it just a matter of changing some things on the HR software to implement the program?
Yes, that we would actually get with the team of Smart Fusion, which is with CSI, and they would actually walk us through to make sure that when we're changing it, it's not going to totally affect a lot of the employees. Plus that makes sense just to start a new year with new policies and our new rollover for leave. It would just be a lot easier.
Well, I know it's too late and it's, um, it's, um, an outlier that you're probably not leaving for recognition, but you've done a phenomenal job with this and we appreciate all the effort and energy that you've put into it as well as the rest of the, the employees and I'm impressed with what you've put together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, we'll echo what Mr. Gaines has said. I appreciate all the hard work that you've put into this as well as the staff and their commitment. It's about, it's about our staff and the ability to provide the services to our citizens. And that's the reason we're here, is provide a quality service and as we've discussed many times, the cost of changeover of employees doesn't allow us that opportunity to provide that top-of-the-line service that, in my opinion, that our citizens deserve. They pay the money, they deserve the best. And so I appreciate the hard work and the dedication that you've shown to put this together.
Yeah, I also want to thank you. Thank you, everybody out there. I mean, this, I think to me years ago when I was out, if it wasn't for people sitting out there, I wouldn't have paid my insurance or got any money because I was out of time. I took my vacation before I got sick, so I was done and then these people up there stepped up. So thank you.
Other questions for Lisa? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of a request for additional funds for legal fees. Chief Financial Officer, Vicky. Vicky Neupert, Vicky.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Um, I'm here today to request additional funding for legal fees. Um, since December two thousand and eighteen, the county has retained the firm of Gerard Davis for our legal services. Since that time, the county has paid this firm three hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, three hundred, at the beginning, when they first came on board, three hundred and seventy thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars was in comp for legal fees. Currently, there's fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars remaining on that PTO and there's no remaining budget. I'm requesting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional funding to pay the invoices through the end of two thousand and nineteen and in order to do that, budget will have to be moved from fund balance.
Questions for Vicky? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
County Manager, the board.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Good afternoon. I would like to also echo what the Commission has just stated with, uh, Ms. Green and her performance. Um, but with that, I'd also like to recognize the staff. I've often said that the team that we, we have is a team that I put against any, anybody. Um, so I appreciate all their hard work in getting these things out that we put in front of them. But anyway, uh, I'd like to remind you, the Commission and the public, that our safety and well-being fair will, uh, will be held at Rock Creek on Tuesday, October the eighth from eight to one. We hope you will, uh, join us, uh, during that fair. Also, as mentioned before, Commissioner Satterfield had completed his ACCG certification and, uh, true to form, he went down there today, received his plaque and was here for the Commission meeting this afternoon. It was in Athens. So congratulations to Commissioner Satterfield. Uh, just an update on some of the construction projects that we have. All our construction projects are moving forward and they're on schedule. So far, we've had limited hiccups, so everything's moving on. Coming up, we will begin the second phase of Kelly Bridge Road. That is a, a full-depth reclamation project. It will be from Kelly Bridge to the, uh, four-way stop at Cowart Road. Our staff, uh, public work staff will be doing the paving. The contractor will be doing the milling and the, and the mixing. So that will be underway here shortly. Also, uh, you know, Shannon is not in the audience tonight and I didn't want to just bring recognition to the board that, um, Angela had their baby, uh, baby girl, four AM yesterday morning and so, uh, congratulations to them. Also, in, in tradition and in keeping, we have a birthday coming up here on the ninth, which is Chairman, Chairman Billy Thurman. So I'd like for somebody to lead us in prayer.
I need it. It's got to be better than singing.
That's true. Prayer probably better. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Time to sing.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
The Lord will have blessed me to be sixty if I make it to that date.
That completes my report. Thank you.
Questions for the County Manager? Thank you, sir. County Attorney Report.
I do not have any public report. I do have a couple of items to speak about in executive session concerning land and litigation.
Okay. With that, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
Sound move.
Motion by Commissioner Fossett.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nix. Discussion. If you're done, please vote. And that is approved four oh. We will take about five minutes, and then we'll meet back in the executive session. There'll be no votes coming out of the executive session, correct? Thank you for your attendance, and we welcome you to be in a sixty call.